County Board of Commission, regular meeting. Five o'clock PM. On Monday, February the 12th. We've already done everything, so we'll get into it. We, I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
No movements, Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Let's, uh, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Bernard.
Aye.
Chair votes out, okay? We got a guest speaker for items not on the agenda, and Ms. Teresa Morgan with the Fire Department, or for the Fire Department. Would you come up, Ms. Teresa, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. The group here with me today are here to show support for the Commissioner of Mr. Lucas. I think he spoke on this at the last meeting that was aired, that y'all rudely just cut him off. I was listening to it on live stream. He asked for this, nobody spoke up, nobody said nothing. I think everybody owes him an apology for just throwing him under the bus and not even giving him the knowledge that y'all heard what he said with his absence. We request, the people of the community, that's the whole Ware County communities, to get equipment for our fire departments, for our volunteer fire departments, for the ones that volunteered to help when we don't, since we don't have enough of staff to staff our fire departments, all of them. Matter of fact, I attended one this past Saturday, and when I was there, there was two people on call. They got two calls within the few minutes I was there. They left that fire department unattended, so if they got another call, who else was going to attend it? There, we had no help. We need new equipment in all the ones that volunteered, so if I go out there and I want to volunteer to help the firemen in our community or anywhere else, I'll have the gear to put on to help. Because by law, you're supposed to have on turnout gear to help with a fire. If not, we're at fault, we're county's at fault, anybody out there fighting a fire without us. I understand there's a number of citizens, including myself, that want to be a volunteer. They need that gear in each station. If you go out there and you want to help fight a fire, that gear should be there for you. I know there's money out there in Orpa that's allotted for this stuff. It won't come out of the slosh, it won't come out of local funds. It's out there, why not use it? I understand there's old trucks out there, the oldest one, I think, is a 1986 that I seen. Station two, Pine Valley. The next truck is a 1998 International, that nine, that's at Wasburg. Equipment, no. The last of the truck, the next truck in line was a 2004 Kenworth, and now I think it's the second out if it's needed to, if the first one's out. And it's industrial port. I want to support Mr. Lucas's idea on getting equipment for these fire departments, and any citizen out there that wants to help be a volunteer firefighter. Like I said, if the equipment's not there, your house can burn down, it could be mine. Heck, I sat there rescuing a lot of times that, for an hour and a half waiting on a train to get by, just get into the house, and you have to go thirty miles around to get back in. My house is gone, you know, it's gone. I trust that this board can get the equipment and the gears that these people need. You know, it's not, like I said, it's not coming out of local funds, it's not coming out of slosh. There's Orpa funds out there. I believe Orpa's been, or purchased a few trucks, that money's there for us. You know, and y'all, y'all should help with that, not just throw it out there to something else that's, say, oh, because I've seen a lot of new trucks coming into Ware County, couple of years, right back to back. Some of these trucks is older than I am. You know, do you want that truck to go out there? I'll tell you, tell you one for instance, Emerson Park Truck, you can go there right now and probably crank it up, try to crank it up, gonna have to jump it off before you go to a fire. Now, is that a good truck to go to? No. So, turnout gears, they probably around between $1,200, $1,500, might be a little more with Obama and them in office, you know, but we need to look at that, Commissioner, we really do. There's Orpa funds out there, and I think we need to look into purchasing these gears for these firemen in our communities. You know, Ware County works hard, we try to support each other, y'all ask for money to raise for other stuff, let's get behind the firefighters and fight for them. That's all I have to say, if anybody else wants to say anything.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. Why you ask yourself?
Yeah, first of all, appreciate you coming, Ms. Morgan, you know, addressing the commission, and, you said the last meeting about Commissioner Lucas, and I can't recall, you know, what it was, or, you know, we cut him off, I apologize for myself, but I can't recall that incident. But anyway, with that being said, have you discussed this with the Chief about the equipment that's needed at these volunteer stations?
No, but I thought I'd come before y'all first, before I got with that. You know, I've talked to different ones, like I said, I've visited some of the stations, and I know that the equipment's not there.
Okay, and I think that's, because that's something we've been trying to make a concerted effort, as far as to try to upgrade these volunteer stations, you know, we've done quite a bit of work as far as the aesthetics on the, these buildings, and showing them up, you know, at the Wasburg, I know, and Pebble, nah, Pebble Hill, but, uh, Boggy Bay. So, uh, I think this is something that I would like for the Chief, you know, if he wants to chime in, if he knows anything about this, about the gear that the people are needing and anything. Have you heard anything? Had this been, had this been brought to your attention, Chief?
I have put a list in front, a sheet in front of each one of you today that has the list of all our trucks on it, years, the mileage, and the hours. Within this year's budget, we have, want to talk about getting three things when it comes to equipment. We want to get turnout gear, fire hose, and SCBA cylinders. That is stuff that we are going to come to y'all with at a later period of time. I got with the manager, we haven't even got into the budget yet, but we are going to put new turnout gear, because some of our gear is outdated, some of our hose is outdated, the work's life expect, expects to see out, and so has the SCBA, so we'll be getting back with you on the equipment for there. You have spent around $30,000 on the stations to be fixed, which includes Wasburg and Boggy Bay. We went in and completely redone the stations on the outside. All the stations, other stations have new signs out there. We do have a couple more stations that has to have some minor work, but our person that is doing the work is working on another project, so when he gets back, those projects will be done. It's nothing to the magnitude of what the Boggy Bay or the Wasburg station was, but it is some vinyl, some other stuff that needs to be done to those stations as well. As far as turnout gear, we're working on turnout gear inside of a budget. The price right now, just a guesstimation on a person, us outfitting one person for turnout gear, is $4,049 a person. That's just, that's a rough guess, is what it would cost. Our SCBA cylinders, which we have to replace, which has a life expectancy on it as well, those are going to run $1,250 apiece. So that's what we will start coming back to you guys for, and me and the manager will be start putting some of these numbers in our budget for 24, 25, and then while we have some money left over, we'll start purchasing some of that here in this budget.
Dee, I got a question for you, in your regular budget, yearly budget, there's money in your budget to replace?
To replace some of it, yeah, we won't be able to replace all the gear at $4,000 apiece, but we can start replacing some of the gear.
But there's money in your budget every year to replace some of this stuff?
Yes, well, we have some in there, and this is the year where it comes up on this ten-year life, uh, life expectancy on it, so we don't replace it until our ten years gets up, because that just have turnout gear that's overlapping. So we will have some that's coming out of this year's budget, and then we'll put some more in next year's budget, so we'll have some where we can come out of there as well.
Do all, um, what, what's the requirement to be a, for a volunteer to be issued turnout gear?
Oh, they have to be certified, tested out through the state, and it has to be at least up to the suppression level. Um, for people that falls into like the support category, they don't necessarily have to have in-date turnout gear, so we can issue them some of the out-of-date stuff that's in good shape, as long as they're not going to be in the hot zone, is, is what we call it.
Teresa, were you implying, were you saying that volunteers need, need turnout gear, they can't get it?
No, I hold you to it, I mean, like, if there's a fire, just a woods fire, and we don't have to go in, and we can have man the hose and all that stuff, you have to have something to protect you from that fire right there, not like they do when they go in the house and then?
Right, that's what Matthew just said.
Yeah.
So what you want to do, if Griffin Road Card on fire out there, you want to be able to get you some gear and help them, is that what you want?
Yeah.
But you can't do it unless you certify, I mean, you have second training.
Well, we can go through training, still, but ain't?
I mean, we cannot furnish everybody in the kennel of, of the jacket.
And I can still train.
I mean, what you're saying, if I had the gear at the fire department, if a fire broke out, I could help them.
Yes.
But you can't do that.
If you sound certified, you can.
You get certified, we'll buy you a brand spanking, you, how about that?
Well, you have the gear and all the trucks, we'll make a second deal, and you, and you put your foot in the right feet, and you, you go ahead and certify.
But that's where we're at with the gear when they get to the, have we got any people now that don't have gear that's, uh?
Just, cause some of the?
Not suppression, but certified.
No, but with what we've had, because one size of gear's not going to fit everybody, so we have to kind of piece together. Right now, we have like nine sets that's still in service that can be given out, uh, but we have a lot, in 2016 is when most of the volunteers got their gear through a grant, and so 2026, that gear's going to be no good, and it was around thirty sets of gear then, so.
How many volunteers don't have equip, uh, turnout gear now?
Everybody that falls into the suppression category will have in-date gear at this point in time.
What about support?
Support has, uh, out-of-date gear.
How many, uh, support volunteers don't have gear?
None, that I'm aware of.
Everybody's got it?
Yes.
Just might be out of date.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that's what the state requirement is. The state requires them to have some form of PPE.
Right.
But, uh, it don't have to be, and instead of us, because I asked the state, and they said we could utilize out-of-date turnouts for the support people, and that would be fine. They just can't actively be engaged in firefighting.
Can't be in the hot zone.
Was there any other equipment, Teresa, you were, you said we need equipment, what?
Yes, for firefighters and other truck, I mean, look at all your trucks, they're up, they're old. They're old, and your equipment's not just for one fire, you're using them from the whole county everywhere.
Haven't we had a new list for volunteers that have?
We have, and we're planning, we're planning on starting next month.
How many, how many sign that list?
Uh, there are nine that I know of, but there'll be more, it's kind of trickles in as we get started.
Closer to it?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
We run, we run a class last year for volunteers, and all the things that we've done, and we're trying to run them more often, so we've already jumped in and fixing to start another class.
Right.
Do we, you, where, where, what station you need the new truck at?
Well, we got a new truck at Station One now, okay? That's the one that we've got, that's the 20?
Twenty-three.
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 The others trucks at the volunteer stations, is if you'll look on your list right here, that'd be your 2009 trucks.
Yeah.
So, all of our trucks right now, I have, I haven't even called and got a price on a truck, because getting in touch with Mr. Lamar, truck prices only stay good for around thirty days, then there's an adjustment that has to be made within, for what, right now, they're working off 2025 emission law that's going to mark a truck up. I haven't even got to that point of going out and looking and seeing what a new truck is to bring back to you guys to tell you what we need. If I was to speculate and guess, I, I, I'm afraid I would be off on what the price of a truck would be.
Okay.
So, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, because if I tell you that the truck's going to cost a guess of $500,000, and I talk to Mr. Lamar, and he says I won't cover, I will already have told y'all what I thought it would be, so I would rather give y'all a real hard number before I come back and tell you what.
So where would the new truck go?
If we were to have a new truck, we would rotate it out and put it at Station Three, which would be, if we had another truck, that would be a brand-new truck at Station Three, which is the other full-time man station, and then that would be two new trucks out, both paid sections.
So what truck is out there now, Southeastern?
Which one they got? Eleven thirteen, it was one of the 2009s.
Okay. Two thousand nine?
So it don't have forty-five thousand miles on it?
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine. Okay, I thought that, before we bought this new truck, that newest old truck that we had at that time was the 2007.
No, that, that's the, that's the E one, that's the one that was the first out truck at Station One. When we got this new truck that we got now, that replaced that truck, which was the one that, so we have now, and that truck is going to the shop, get it repaired, and then it would be put in service back in one of the stations. So, 2008 model.
So the truck that she's talking about is that Emerson Park, is that one of the 2009 models? And it won't crank?
That dumb it off.
I wrote it down on my list to check to see why it won't crank.
Well, it needs to be, if it don't crank, it needs to be fixed. Yeah.
And you don't realize, if you get up-to-date equipment and gear, the insurance for the county is going to go down. But if we have up-to-date equipment, that means our insurance is going to be a little cheaper than what it is now. I think it's at a Class Five now, and if we have better equipment and trucks, it can come down a little bit more.
I will say this right here, I haven't said anything?
I got you, I got you, I want to, I got it right here, I'm waiting, Chief. I'm just waiting on you to get to.
Read it, mind.
So, anyway. That's, that's where our equipment is, if, if Chief Granton has a need of, a person in need of gear, if they'll come see us, if they're a support person, we'll put them in some gear. And then I will come back to y'all at a later time, when I get with the manager on what, where we can nail down the actual price of gear, because you said it was around $4,000 now, that's helmets, hood, coat, boots, gloves, jackets, pants, that's the whole nine yards, is around four grand a person. And that's not the highest in the brand, that's probably mid to mid. Right.
And how many sets do you need right now? To be?
Was it ten, fifteen?
Yeah, it, it really be based on how many people actually finish us through with the, this new class we're going to start, because that, when we get into it, we can, they can train in some of that out-of-date gear until we get to the live fire, but once we introduce the live fire, they can't, they have to have in-date turnout.
The stuff that's out there now, will it run out of date? Twenty twenty-six, you said?
We, uh? Some of them, yeah, some of them will.
Some that's already out of date.
There's some people that could come out there, and if they can fit in that twenty, that year, that'd go out in 2026, they still got two years of life expectancy.
Well, if you bought half five now, half five in twenty-six, you'd be in good shape, wouldn't you?
And, uh, it, you know, we, we did get, we do have some gear that was bought in 2021, the commission approved for fourteen sets, and we got, uh, a grant, and bought, was able to get ten sets of that. So we do have some gear that's 2021, but like I said, when we get into the, the new class, and we're adding, adding people, because even the gear that we have in, in stock upstairs is not going to fit everybody, so you still may be left having to outfit those people.
Okay.
Dee, if you'll bring us a list of stuff that you need, this commission will supply, I promise you that, they will. We need, yeah, we need to know what, what you got to have, I guess, whatever is necessary.
I'm not talking about a wish, Liz, I'm talking about stuff that you need to know.
Well, yeah.
Well, what about people that leave, that don't do, do volunteering, they turn their equipment back in?
Yeah.
You get that back?
Yes.
Or we'll cut a warrant for them.
You got a, if you got some, I know, you're trying to get some new ones, so there must be some leaving or something.
We get our old gear back, when somebody has it, and they volunteer, and they quit volunteering, we get it.
And the new one can't use that, or?
Yes, they can fit in.
So we have to buy new gear when we hire a new person?
Yes.
We need to find some of the same size. Need to find some of the same size.
A universal, like?
Yeah. Now, that four thousand dollars, like, that's pretty expensive, ain't it? Okay, we got, somebody want to say something?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Porter Jones, it's 4365 Drigger Road.
Drigger Road.
I moved to Ware County in 1988. I have been coming to this commission meeting off and on ever since then. When I first moved here, within a matter of days, I got with Chief Jimmy Brown and joined Volunteer Fire Department, Ware County. I enjoyed working with him. During this whole timeframe, and some of you people was involved then also, they'd come up here and ask for something, brab, 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 just like somebody bowling, they roll the ball down, he hits the pins, and he stops. That's where it stops, he hits that wall right there and stops. I'm hearing the same thing right now, I've been here for thirty years. It is my understanding, from a reliable source, that you are sitting on over four million dollars federal money from COVID that could be spent for equipment and trucks, and you're going to sell that money and let it leave this county because you didn't want to support the fire department? You know who I'm talking about, and you can see, you can get that stick, sticker off your face.
Excuse me, sir, just so we, but, Mr. Chairman, if we can, just make sure all our comments are directed to the board as a whole, instead of any individual commissioners.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
But it's the same thing, it's just a, like a rabbit being in a cage, trying to spin his way out. They don't get the support they need from this commission.
Well, I will tell you something about things, I think that the fire department is a little, uh, spends too much money in this county.
Why, how? For the protection of the citizens?
You ever, you ever know how much it really costs to run these fire departments? It costs a lot of money.
It costs a lot of money, yes.
They are highly needed, but we need to control it a little bit.
Well, I don't, I?
From my point of view, we need to control it a little better.
I have supported Splotch ever since it started, Splotch, I have supported it. And I see this thing all the time, just rounding around. The man is up here asking for equipment, and nobody is seeing, well, come back, well, come back, well, come back, I've been hearing that for years. I guess I better sit down and shut up before I say something I shouldn't say. This is the first time I've been up here in a long time, because I do have a short fuse, and sometimes it lights off when it shouldn't, so I guess perhaps I need to shut, shut up and sit down, which would be to certain ones' delight. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, let's get out of this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If nobody else has a public comment, I would like to have the Chief back up here for a minute, and I'm going to stand up as I read this, this is not on the agenda, but I take pride in this myself, and this is the reason, part of the reason I fight so hard for our fire department and for our first responders. Gentlemen standing before you right now, Chief Dee Meadows has just been reappointed by the Governor of the State of Georgia, Brian Kemp, to the Georgia Department of Public Safety, Public Safety, which oversees day-to-day operations of the Georgia State Patrol, the Capitol Police, uh, the GBI, and the Motor Care Compliance Division. And again, he was appointed by the Governor himself, Governor Kemp. He's one of two fire chiefs in the state of Georgia, the other one being in Savannah, Chatham County. So that's two fire chiefs that's on this board, and one of them is employed right here in Ware County. I think that speaks volumes of Ware County, okay? The second thing I'm going to say is this is his second term, he was reappointed a second time by the Governor. To me, that speaks volumes, because it says to me that he done an outstanding job. The Governor saw it, the Governor reappointed him. And that's again, the reason that I'm backing them as much as I am, along with the rest of the first responders. And I'll go take it a step further, she just, she just mentioned it a while ago, and I didn't want to take the limelight away from what I had wrote down, I didn't mean to cut y'all off, but we just went from an ISO rating, I know all y'all familiar, we just went from ISO five, a six, to a five. What that means for the county citizens is, every thousand dollars that you pay on your homeowner's insurance, you're now saving eighty for every thousand that you save. We're four points from an ISO four, is that right, Chief? Four points. Turn a few wrenches, change a few things around, very minimal amount of money, new fire truck, things like that, we can get to an ISO four, and now you've went from eighty dollars for every thousand to a hundred and sixty every thousand, and that's for every partial in Ware County, which includes businesses. It don't, it's not just homeowners, it's businesses as well. And this, and, and I, when I talked to the Chief about this, he told me point blank, this was not him, this was a team effort by the entire fire department, for the first time in a long time that, that he even knows of, and it's the first time that I know of, that we've ever been a Class Five. And now we're four points away from a Class Four, which we've never attained, as long as Ware County's been Ware County. It's no small achievement, because all of this hard work is still in process, okay? And those of y'all that aren't familiar with what ISO stands for, it stands for Insurance Services Office of the State of Georgia, is what ISO stands for. And that's this man, the man sitting back here, there's about five or six or seven of them in here. This is your Ware County Fire Department and your Volunteer Fire Department, that has brought this to the citizens of Ware County, and again, that's the reason I back them as much as I do, and I will continue to back the first responders a hundred percent.
Lou here, it's real simple, I tell you what, tell all the taxpayers, we raise the house, the tax donor house is $100 a year, we'll buy them all the gold, factor.
You don't need to, use some of that four million dollars you're sitting on.
Yeah, I guess, use that. Leave the, we're going to pave roads with that.
Somebody else might want to speak and speak.
Somebody else? Come on up here. Come up.
And I'll just remind everybody, while we have been walking to the podium, if you all will, let's just remember that, you know, we want to show decorum in our presentation here, so whoever's speaking, we will give them the floor, recognize, of course, we won't be yelling out from the audience or anything of that sort, so thank you all for, for allowing us to do that.
Yes, my, my, just, I didn't feel like it was mentioned, I just wanted to add to it. It sounds like they're asking to replace a 2009 fire truck, which is perfectly good, with a brand-new fire truck, and that doesn't really seem like the case, that it would be, the new truck will replace that truck, that truck will replace, uh, the old 1101, which used to be with the prison fire department, and then that truck will go and replace the 1986. So realistically, you're talking about replacing a 1986 truck, not a perfectly good 2009 truck. And even that, uh, there was talk about using that 1986 truck, because it still pumps really good, it just doesn't drive very well, it will be utilized at the training center, so that the other fire departments that come and use the training center will have a piece of equipment they can use. But that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, y'all bring us a list of what we need, right, I think. Steve said, bring a list, and we'll look at it, see what, if we can afford it, and see if we can get. Okay, let's move on. We got an employee of the month. Carter Malone, Teresa, would you come up, please, and, uh, do it for us? Carter Malone. Teresa, would you come up, please, and, uh, do it for us?
Well, I guess in keeping with the fire theme, we're gonna do a presentation for this month's, uh, Employee of the Month. Mr. Carter Malone with our Ware County Fire Rescue has been nominated by Captain Brian Barnador. He was nominated because Carter has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication, professionalism, and a strong commitment to our department's mission. Carter has been an integral part of our team for three and a half years. Throughout this time, he has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty. He is known for his unwavering commitment to the safety of our community and the well-being of our team members. Furthermore, Carter is always willing to lend a helping hand to colleagues, providing support and mentorship to other team members. His positive attitude and willingness to collaborate make him a true asset to our department. In addition to his exemplary work performance, Carter actively participates in departmental training sessions and continuously seeks opportunities for professional development. He is a role model for others, embodying the values and principles that our department holds dear. The nomination came in because they strongly believe that his nomination would not only acknowledge his outstanding contributions, but also motivate the entire team to strive for excellence. So we have Mr. Carter here with his family. If he could come up for the presentation. My, my eyes back here weren't working, I'm sorry.
Got anything to say?
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Okay, uh, we're gonna go on to the agenda. Uh, straight right, right away, acceptance on La June Road and Alton Circle. We have had a lot of discussions on this thing. And I hear a motion that we accept this thing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the right of way de-acceptance on La June Road and Alton Circle.
I got a second.
Sorry, I got?
I got a second, okay? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Going back to my city, county, state. Only thing I would say is, uh, that I think we're sending the president here for someone else if they want to come and have a private road, want the county to take over it, and do these boards and all this kind of stuff, that we're gonna be hard pressed to deny them of that privilege to be able to get the road, the county to take over the road. I understand and appreciate what Mr. McCloskey and Mr. South are doing out there at the building, at the homes and everything, but again, separate from that, this is a private road, and I just don't think at this point the county should be taking over this road because, you know, this road's been there a long time and we taking it over. Well, we know it wasn't built to kind of standards as our ordinary states. So that's my position on it.
Okay. I did owe that statement.
But under discussion, the county engineer said that it meets our specifications for acceptance.
Yeah, but as we stated earlier in the work session, that whenever someone wants the county to take over a road of this, on the front end, whenever they getting ready to build a road, that way we are involved with the process of them building the road, making sure that everything is done to our specs. But this is a case after the fact.
Right.
Years after the fact, so that's the only thing I'm saying.
I, when I looked at it, it's, uh, straight look good, that curb better paved. And, uh, but it's seventeen years old. Any of them gonna probably have a little wear on them, but I'm all right with it. Or we, if it's built to the specifications, then I feel like we obligated to take the road.
I won't go as far as to say we obligated to take it. I mean, that's up to, whatever commission deals at that time discretion, whether they want to accept it or not. But I'd say it wasn't done on the front end, and so, you know.
Right. I understand that.
I'd say it's nothing personal, but it's just business.
I say we got, we got a motion and a second.
I got, I want to comment.
You want to comment?
Also, you know, we need to figure too, by the time they get through developing that subdivision, there probably gonna be about seven and a half million dollars worth of homes in that division. That's a bunch of tax money.
Lot of tax money coming.
I couldn't agree with you more.
We need more subdivision to pump out eight million dollars worth of taxes, or eight million dollars of property.
We're talking about getting some industry in here, and we, we need some homes built.
Get the same amount of taxes out of it right now as you will when the road is declared as a county road.
But the people need something.
People need something for return on the taxes far as getting rid of it, too.
Okay, anymore? No, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
No.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
I'm all about no.
Mr. Burner?
Uh.
Chair votes, uh, let's move on. Okay. B, alcohol license ordinance correction package sales on Sundays, okay? That, uh, we know what that's about. Are you a motion on that one? You got a motion?
Chairman, I move that the ordinance correction be approved.
Okay, you got a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
Can I try to explain exactly what's going on, please?
Well, I think he explained it, why don't you go, but I mean, go ahead and explain it.
Please do it again.
Correction.
I'll be glad to. Um, so as you all are aware, at our, um, most recent meeting, there was a document put before you all, um, which changed Sunday sales in Ware County. And there was a scrivener's error, just a, you know, basically a typo, um, in one section of the document where the package sales were also included in the Sunday sales. But that was, should not have happened. That was not approved by the voters on the ballot. And also, my understanding was not your intent, and it was just simply a scrivener's error. And so this document just fixes that one little line, um, and there will be no Sunday sales for package sales, which would be your convenience stores, um, your package stores. There will be package sales for restaurants, bowling alleys, uh, pouring, pouring licenses.
Okay.
And it also would have time constraints on it also, right?
Correct, that's right. And those are all outlined in that document.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Uh.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Uh.
Mr. Burner?
Uh.
Chair votes, uh, all right. Now, property lease approval, non-ironical facility lease agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the property lease approval for non-ironical and, uh, Scott Haffield.
Okay, any discussion on it?
Do we need to state their mind in that motion, Miss, Madam Counselor?
Please.
You need to put the amount in it. Could you read that off in, I guess?
Three hundred.
Go back over there. From one hundred to three hundred dollars?
Yes, sir, it's on two point one. It's from a hundred dollars to three hundred dollars, as of May twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right, we got any, uh, discussion on it? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Uh.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Uh.
Mr. Burner?
Uh.
Chair votes, uh. All right. This is a resolution on twenty twenty-four dash oh-two, Support for Mental Health Resources in the State of Georgia.
Mr. Chairman, I offer motion that we, uh, adopt this resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh-two for support for the mental health resources in the state of Georgia.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on it? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Uh.
Mr. Pope, uh, Mr. Lucas?
Uh.
Mr. Burner?
Uh.
Chair votes, uh. Okay, the purchase request for the Ware County Health Department boiler replacement. You don't know what that was about? I hear a motion. Replace the boiler.
Mr. Chair, I vote, make a motion that we accept and purchase the train that's needed for fifty thousand four hundred seventeen dollars for the Ware County Health Department to bring their boiler up to standards.
Sorry. Okay, you got a motion and a second. Can we also add, uh, parking area to that? To be looked at?
Well, what we'll do is when we get that ready for the, uh, the change order for the co, the existing contract that we have right now, we'll bring that to you for.
See if it, okay.
At that, probably in the next meeting.
Later date, okay, all right. These funds come out of our, correct?
That's correct, yes.
These funds is going to come tomorrow, okay.
Yeah, what's, yeah. Yes, I'm curious, that parking lot, that building, we own that building and the parking lot, the land, all this?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
I just, I didn't know if the.
It's ours to.
The land was donated by the city. The building is provided by the county, and the state provides the equipment. That's the way that health department agreement was formulated for all parties to be involved. And it's very convoluted, but we are, we provide the facility. So that land was donated by the city of Wecross. I think it's all in the state's.
It's all in state's name, yeah.
It's listed as the state of Georgia.
Okay, so that's our responsibility, the parking lot.
Facilities, just.
Okay.
It's ours baby, and we're taking care of it.
Okay, that's what, okay.
Any more discussion on it? We got a motion and a second, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson?
Uh.
Mr. Pope?
Uh.
Mr. Lucas?
Uh.
Mr. Burner? Uh.
Chair votes, uh. Okay. County manager report.
Um, the only thing I want to mention is our TPCC, the Transportation, uh, Planning, Coordinating Committee, meeting is this Thursday at, uh, ten-thirty upstairs here. Just mentioning that in case anyone had a ten.
Scott, do we have, have you got anything, any reports on the overpass on Albany Avenue?
No, sir, only that they, um, that they have a, they're still trying to do more coordination with CSX, uh, from that standpoint. The bridge design is being done now based on the information that they have. Um, you know if there's anything else, Brandon, on far as the status?
Uh, the original schedule, Mr. Chairman, called for the right-of-way plans, uh, to be ready. I think, uh, in another couple of months. The original schedule showed then starting on January the first, and that was delayed a little bit with approving their contract and everything. So, uh, probably about two and a half months, uh, slide in the schedule. So we should be starting, we should be hitting right, right-of-way plans pretty soon, starting that acquisition process.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, since we were talking about that, uh, the overpass there, was it ever worked out as far as the riding, you know, we was talking about, instead of that road going under, we're gonna have to kind of change the?
Yes, sir, uh, that right-of-way, they basically told us, you're not, you're not going to, uh, compete in our right-of-way. Uh, that, that right-of-way to the east, if you're looking at the, the bridge part of the east there, that we had the road designed and it was, it was, uh, in part of that right-of-way, and they basically told us they would not allow that. The only way we'd be able to do that is to totally shift that road more east to get out, outside of their right-of-way.
So that's CSX saying that the county cannot encroach on their right-of-way.
That's correct.
Okay, and wasn't there some determination about, they don't really have right-of-way?
On the west, on the west side, they don't. Um, and I don't remember, Brandon, you know if it's on the east side, too? I think, I'm pretty sure it's on the west side to know that.
Well, I'm.
The, the right-of-way, the CSX right-of-way, in the road, road right-of-way area.
I don't think they own the, the crossing.
Yeah.
There is property from the old line, Mr. Chairman, that used to run in, down, kind of where, uh, is that Jackson Street?
Yeah, did they give that back to the city?
It owned further down, but this portion that we're talking about right now, they still own.
Yes. They still own a portion closer up to where the, where the intersection is.
From the end of Jackson Street back down towards the river crossing.
Okay.
CSX still own.
Because in the original rendering and the concept was that Galveston was supposed to have been going up under the, uh, overpass, right?
Right, right.
And now that we not gonna be able to do that.
And then run, run under the, the bridge, and then connect to Brunswick Avenue is the name of the road, Brunswick.
Yeah, it's not Jackson, so.
Yeah, it's Brunswick Avenue. There's a section there that they still own that's closer to the intersection, but the city owns it pretty much, I think. I'm trying to think of the name of the street. I'll think of it in a minute, but they own, the city owns the rest of it, yes.
How many feet?
They will not, they will not, um, budge on their right-of-way.
How many feet would we have to, how many, how many feet would we have to in the bridge?
That I don't know. I've, I started, I've mentioned that to the designers, and they said they'd look at it, but it would extend the bridge even more. You know, you're probably talking at least twenty-five more feet out so you could get the road outside of their right-of-way. We faced the same thing with Jamestown. When we tried to build the Jamestown, the access road in their right-of-way, and they told us we could for about eight months, and then turned around and said, oh, by the way, we don't like you using our right-of-way.
Yeah.
So that's why it slowed that project down.
Okay. Have we heard anything on the US one? Is it, or is it?
Still, they're still going back into as far as design. Um, they had to prolong it because the walls were encroaching in the CSX right-of-way, and so they kicked them out. And now it's delayed the project about a year. And from what we were talking about today, if, if both schedules line up, then you're gonna have both of those projects going on at the same time, which might not work, um, because you'll have US one State Street totally taken out. You will not be able to use that road at all. And then Albany Avenue will be taken out on both sides of the intersection.
And one of them needs to go ahead and build ahead of the other one.
Yeah.
Albany Avenue, we think it probably would build ahead of.
Maybe, maybe we can move a lot faster and, and at least try to get that done.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed on, what is it, Blacksheer Avenue, that we just do resurfacing on that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's definitely.
That, that, what, that Blacksheer, all the way to where?
Gilbert. Gilbert, me, and so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I went out to the Heritage Center, that's the first time I saw it, you know, and, uh, looks good, and I would love to see some of that on some of these other roads that we 'cause I'm telling you, a lot of these roads in this city, I know in the city, are getting in kind of bad shape. I'm talking about foot riding on them, you can't hardly ride without jawing and bumping and all that, and so that's why I said we need to stop spinning our wheels and try, just doing something, you know?
Yep. Okay.
You got a motion? No, that's it.
I've got one thing I want to say concerning the fire department. There's some stuff going around that the commission does not back the fire department. Boy, the last month, we approved pay raise for every one of our firemen. We raised the starting salary at a dollar an hour. I think everybody from about day one to about, what, fifteen months, we raised them a dollar an hour. And all of the older firemen, five percent raise. Uh, just to, well, we could get good people out there. I mean, we do not try to take anything away from the fire department. Y'all valuable people out there. We, I mean, think we're the everyone. I just, I don't know who's starting to best say that we're anti-fire department. We're, we're not. We try our best to give you everything you need. That's all I got to say about it.
Any more? Okay. No more comments. Okay, no more comments. I hear a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Got a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.